All right. Like to call the regular council meeting to adjournment Thursday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at four thirty-three. And Ms. Clerk, would you like to read the legal stuff now?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Okay.
Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's post controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Myra. All right, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santaines?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
All right, may we all rise? I am going to give the invocation and followed by Lynn Gurecki of Public Works for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh gracious God, thank you for what you do. Please bless our actions here tonight and assist us with this strong Bellflower community that we have. May you lend your wisdom and find the solutions here tonight for what we do. Thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve our way of life. We ask for your protection and blessings in our military men and women and first responders, and may they always return home safely to their families. In your name, amen.
Please address the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna go into council comments. I'm gonna go first. The L.A. County Public Health Department has a COVID-19 pickup testing kit program which allows residents to pick up a PCR test kit, perform the test, and return the complete test to the designated sites for the processing that will be needed. Pickup test kits will be available without an appointment and until daily supplies are exhausted at designated locations. For more information on this program, please visit All right, Sonny, what do you have?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the recent surge in COVID-19 cases, most parks and recreation classes and programs have been canceled or pushed back to be reevaluated next month. The new recreation brochure for spring programming and events will also be distributed to residents next month with additional updates. For more information on parks and recreation programs, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four extension two two six eight. That's all I have. Mayor?
Thank you, Sonny. May we have Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, good afternoon and Happy New Year, Bellflower. There's some more health info here. The L.A. County Public Health Department issued a new health officer order on January fifth, two thousand twenty-two, which requires employers to provide their employees who work indoors and in close contact with other workers or the public with and require them to wear a well-fitting medical-grade mask, surgical mask, or higher-level respirator, such as an N95 or KN95 mask at all times while indoors at the work site or facility, no later than January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. More information on this L.A. County Public Health Officer Order can be found at Additionally, the California Department of Public Health has extended the statewide indoor masking requirement one month through February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. More information on state COVID-19 mandates can be found at covid19.ca.gov. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Bellflower previously launched the BuyBellflower.com, a digital gift card program to benefit both local businesses and customers. This program is still available through the end of March, two thousand twenty-two. There are discounts of up to twenty-five percent on purchases of a hundred dollars or more and twenty percent discounts on purchases of twenty-five dollars through ninety-nine dollars. Bellflower merchants can register for free at BuyBellflower.com. For questions regarding this program, please contact our Economic Development Department at five six two eight oh four one four two four extension two two four nine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites you and the community to join their monthly meeting, which will take place Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, between nine and ten in the morning. More information, call eight six seven seventeen forty-four. That's it, Mr. Mayor. I used to have the longest one, now I'm not, so I get two sentences.
Looks like you're gonna start adding libs.
Right.
All right, item ten is public comments. Mr. Stewart?
This is time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. A test provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it'll appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Mayor, I have a member of the public by the name of iPad who would like to present comment. Can you please identify yourself?
If you're referring to me, this is Fred Taylor.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Fred.
I just wanted to let you know that the chamber did cancel the upcoming mingle, so it will not be happening.
Thank you, yeah, I myself got an email on that, and I understand why.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Give it a minute to see if there's anybody else.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any further raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart, item eleven A?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, and it's consideration of possible action. Conduct a public hearing to consider adopting Resolution Number twenty-two dash one, a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute agreement for disposition of real property number eight-eight-two-point-one in a form approved by the City Attorney between the Urban Pacific Development Group, LLC, and the City of Bellflower for the disposition of real property located at nine-four-four-three Artesia Boulevard. And Mr. Delong has staff report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I actually have one slide so you can see what the property looks like and its location. So could you, Madam City Clerk, allow me to share my screen, please? Okay. There we go. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. As Mr. Stewart mentioned, today's public hearing is to consider the sale of city-owned property at ninety-four forty-three Artesia Boulevard. The proposed sale is between the city and the purchaser, purchaser known as Urban Pacific Development Group. It is anticipated that an application will be filed within approximately six months for development on this site for a potential multifamily development. The property is ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-one square feet in area, and it's located mid-block on the north side of Artesia Boulevard between Ardmore Avenue and Clark Avenue. The property was purchased by the city from the successor agency in April of two thousand eighteen for one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Urban Pacific Development Group in October of two thousand twenty. The negotiated purchase price for this parcel is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is supported by a valuation analysis that was prepared by Harrison Associates in November, two thousand twenty-one. The study indicates an estimated fair market value of the property of three hundred and six thousand nine hundred and five dollars. The negotiated purchase price of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is above the estimated fair market value of the property. Should an application be filed and a development eventually approved, then the development is expected to improve economic opportunity by increasing property tax revenues by at least fifteen percent. Currently, the property is vacant, and it is not generating any taxes or benefits to the city. Pursuant to Assembly Bill eight-zero-six, which amended several sections of the government code, including the process for the sale of city-owned property for economic development purposes, staff has prepared a summary report that describes the important points of the agreement. It is attached as part of the agenda packet and was made available for public review along with the draft acquisition or disposition agreement prior to tonight's, or today's, hearing. At this time, staff is recommending the City Council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number twenty-two dash one, authorizing the City Manager to execute agreement for disposition of real property AFN eight-eight-two-point-one in a form approved by the City Attorney, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer questions. And Mr. Scott Chopin of Urban Pacific Development Group is also online today for any questions.
Thank you, Jim. All right, what's your pleasure? To entertain a motion for a public hearing.
I got a couple of questions. Or you want to do the open the public hearing first?
Go ahead and do the question answers first.
That might resolve some of the issues.
Jim, when we acquired the property from the successor agency, did we also get the mineral rights with that property? And if so, are they being sold at this time?
Wow, that's a good question, Councilmember. I believe, I don't have an answer to that one. I'll have to look that up and get back to you.
All right. Has it been determined if we do the deal and close escrow, where this money that is gonna be paid to the city will go? I think I would like to see it go into our account that has to do with the advancement of purchasing property. And I don't know at what point we have that discussion, but I don't necessarily want to get lost in the general fund.
That's certainly doable. We can designate for that.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Do we need another meeting to do that, or can we roll it into this, whatever happens?
You can roll it into the recommendation if you move forward with this item.
There's a particular name for that account, although I can't recall it.
It's property acquisition.
Right, so I think that's, well, that would be the appropriate place to use the money more usefully.
Great idea.
That's all I have.
Any other questions to staff?
Yeah, I have questions. Oh, Jim, thank you so much for working diligently to find a buyer for this property. And I like the recommendation to get a developer, develop housing. We need more housing. Just a couple of questions. Do you know how many units offhand will be added once they purchase the property?
They are proposing six units.
Six units.
Or looking at six units and seeing how they will fit on the property.
Okay, so they're shooting for six units. Okay, great.
Yeah.
And what's the current zoning of the property?
Current zoning is a general commercial, so they will be required to go through a zoning change and general plan amendment to get the proper zoning in place for the development.
And you don't foresee any problem getting that changed in terms of zoning?
Not at all. It's actually adjacent to, in the back, other residential housing. And I believe this is also part of the housing element, one of those target areas for the housing element.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sonny. Any other questions?
Just a couple of quick ones. Thank you, Jim, again for the report. What's the depth of that property?
The depth of the property is about, oh, gosh. Let me bring up the, see if I can bring up the shot again if I had it on there. Scott, do you remember off the top of your head what the depth of the property is?
I don't, Jim. I'm actually trying to look myself now, but if I find it, I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, just, again, just raffing it, just looking at the screen itself, I would say less than, probably less than two hundred.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, that dimension for commercial, you know, even though it's the Artesia corridor, it seems shallow, so. And obviously, the fragmentation of properties out there is, obviously, has made it difficult over the current decades of opportunities. So, but, you know, housing, again, has to run hand in hand with our, you know, growing commercial, hopefully. And definitely, again, we need to meet some numbers. So I think this definitely has, you know, it's, again, very viable for for this type of, you know, development. Again, as, I mean, other parts of Artesia, I mean, you know, once you start getting into the bigger lots, then obviously, we can look at some, you know, commercial opportunities. But as it's pieced like this, it's probably something not, you know, not to head to, so. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, that leaves me. I do have just two questions. One, a follow-up. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Follow-up for Mr. Delonga. First off, I heard six units. Do you know the type of units? Would these be condos?
They will be actually rental units.
Okay.
Townhome-style rental units.
Townhome-style?
Yeah.
That was the next, perfect. Okay, that's, and then, Jim, a quick question here. Once we, kind of, just from reading the language, once we, you know, close escrow here, or once we go into escrow and close it, what would be the guarantees that the project actually takes place? Do we have any in place? Is that, or do we just take it on cliff face?
Well, the escrow will not close until Urban Pacific Development Group has their entitlements. So they're going to be putting in a tremendous amount of money to get those entitlements. So there's a, I don't think he's not going to develop it after spending a significant amount of funds to do the general plan amendment and the zone change.
Perfect, so it stays in escrow?
Yes.
Perfect, awesome. That was it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the presentation. I think this is gonna be good.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question to follow up from.
Mr. Coops, go ahead.
All right. So, Mr. Sanchez, you brought forward the idea as to what kind of units they'd be, rental or homeownership. And my question to Jim is, will they be built to condo specs so they could ever be converted into homeownership?
How about if I leave that for the developer, Scott Chopin? I think he could describe that. They will have garages and so forth, so they'll be pretty close to condo specs. But I'll let him answer that question.
I'd be interested in knowing whether or not they're gonna have individual water meters, electric meters, gas meters, that kind of stuff.
Happy to answer these questions.
All right.
So they will be.
Why don't we wait until we get the public hearing open?
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I'll second.
Without objection, that'll be the order. All right, Scott Chopin, let's do it.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Appreciate it. Let's see, the units will be condo spec in the way I think that you would typically think of from a finish and look standpoint, with one specific caveat that they will not be subdivided, so, which is normally one of the legal considerations for condo conversion in the future. But I think in every instance, you're gonna see that these are condo level, so individual water meters, electric meters, gas meters, individual garages, as Jim described. So I think in every, you know, livable characteristic and the way they look and the quality, that they would be, you know, viewed as condos, although they won't be legally.
Great.
I've got a question for you. Will they have laundry hookups in each unit, or is it a laundry room?
We actually have a full-size side-by-side laundry room in every unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we got that appliance question out of the way from the appliance thing. All right, let's, I think that's all, if that's all our questions, let's see if the public has anything.
I'm sorry, just a couple more, again, as we were talking, some popped in my head again.
Okay, go right ahead.
Back to Jim. Jim, you had mentioned that, again, this parcel needs a, you know, zone change and a general plan amendment. Are we, we are looking at doing that for the area rather than a single parcel?
Well, the city is.
The city is, all right, yeah.
Yeah, the developer is interested in going a little faster than the city's processes right now, since we're in the middle of the housing element process and still need to wait for the state to certify our element. So he's willing to move forward ahead of that.
All right, yeah, good. And the other thing that popped in my mind was the design of this project. I thought there's been some discussion in the past. Because there's been efforts to purchase these surrounding properties, would there be, look at, design features that will make it flow between parcels if this owner purchases some of the other properties?
Yes, he, the developer has designed it in such a way that it could be expanded east and west should those properties become a part of the project in the future.
All right, okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Sanchez, you got anything out there in Zoom land?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. All right, now let's see if the public has anything to chime in on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, it's already, it's already opened.
Oh, my apologies.
That's all right. It's Zoom stuff, and it's confusing to me, too.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, public hearing is closed. Without objection, that'll be the order. What's your pleasure, guys?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one.
Second.
I'll second that.
Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Santaines, and the second by Councilmember Ray Hamada.
Would you want to add the caveat that the money goes into the property acquisition fund as well?
Yeah.
Yes, agree.
Yeah, as amended with, as your, the motioner and the support, as amended from Councilmember Coops's comments.
Councilmember Hamada?
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Hamada?
Yes.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Oh.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santaines?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, item twelve A, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, with staff's request, we pull this item, bring it back at a future meeting. We want to tinker with it a bit more before we bring it back to City Council, so I'd recommend we pull it tonight.
Okay. Let it be pulled. Okay, then let's move on to Mr. Stewart, item thirteen A.
Yeah, this is consideration of possible action to select the two thousand twenty-two alternate director to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District's number two-three in eighteen pursuant to Resolution number nineteen dash ninety-two.
Gotcha. I have a question, I don't know if it's a staff or an attorney thing, but I know a couple of years ago, we changed something, and it's always, it's always been, the alternate's always been Mayor Protem. And we've been doing this like last year and this year. I mean, can, is, do we have to codify something or a resolution for something to go back the way it was without, you know? I know it's the three districts, Sonny's on the district number five, I get that. Or three. And can we do something tonight to let this action just always be the mayor and the Protem?
Yeah, let me look into that. There's maybe a requirement from Sanitation District. I'm trying to remember. I remember having this discussion. I don't remember what happened subsequent. I think what we'd recommend tonight is we move forward with this item.
Move forward and try to fix it next time.
And then what I'll do is I'll research whether or not we can, if we need to bring it back, we will. If we can't, I'll let you guys know, and we'll go from there.
Gotcha, okay.
If I, if I may, a comment here, because I'm the guilty party here.
That's okay.
And, and just to remind you, the whole premise is, because I was encouraged to be part of the personal committee of the Sanitation District. And the only way that I can be a member of the personal committee is if I am a chair of a district. That's why I was really glad that the City Council allowed me to be the chair of District Three, regardless of who the Mayor Protem is. But I think that after, after this term, I think I will relinquish that because the negotiation, labor negotiations are gonna happen this year. And hopefully, that will conclude that, and I think we're gonna go back to our normal life after that.
Well, I had no, you did an excellent job of the, that committee. I wouldn't put that on anybody. You dug in and, as, four years ago, when I handed the baton to you to get on it, yeah, I said, you just be prepared for this. And you got so involved that you needed to be there and guide that.
Yeah.
And so sanitation district is in a better place with their labor force and their negotiations. But with that, okay, we'll move on, and I'd like to, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, make the Mayor Protem, Sonny Santaines, to, as the delegate. I mean, the alternate.
Okay.
I'll support that motion.
Sorry, again.
I was just trying to get around that to make it easier, but it seemed to be more complicated as usual in government. But with that, without objection, the motion and the second passes. And get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santaines?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, welcome. All right, we're down to the consent calendar, guys. So does anybody have any conflicts? Does anybody have anything, items they want to pull or discuss?
No, Mayor, I just want to confirm that there were corrections made on item, let me see, the minutes of the meeting, and also on item fourteen E regarding the contract. So that the contract will end on June twenty, June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. So that's, I think I saw the corrections already, and also, yeah, okay, all right. So I'm good with that. Thank you.
So Sonny's good.
I'm good. I moved the consent calendar.
That's corrected.
That's corrected.
Second.
No conflicts?
No.
No items pulled on the consent calendar. Getting off to a good start, guys. Pretty generic. And, Mr. Sanchez, out there in Zoom land, you're okay?
Yes, sir.
I didn't, okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Santaines?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember reports. Mr. Hamada, you have anything you want to report to?
Just a couple of quick ones here. Again, I'll just stick to the new year. Again, last week. Had the, again, opportunity to attend some of the local schools' safety plan meetings. I was able to join in at at Ernie Pyle. And also Washington, I was able to go on Zoom. They had a Zoom, late, late Zoom call. But I think it, it was a great opportunity to have dialogue with them as it pertains to public safety. So. Got some requests and I've been able to pass it on to the department and and they're working on them. So. Also, last week, I attended both SCAG meetings, the Transportation and the Regional Council, and also the Cal Cities Division meeting. So. Still keeping busy. So again, had the. I was able to attend Val Lurch's funeral. So had a nice funeral and. You know, he's a a very good man that we lost and again, he'll he'll be remembered. So. Right, and I, last few days, I was able to. Watch Clark Avenue get resurfaced and I wanted to thank Public Works and the contractor. They've done a great job. Sort of watched the asphalt dry or cure, whatever it is, and it's a smooth ride from Foster to Alondra. So again, thank you, Lynn. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Sunny Santinas, or Mayor Pro Tim Sunny Santinas.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Again, happy new year to everyone. This is our first meeting of this of this year, two thousand twenty two. I hope that you had a nice holiday break the last couple of weeks. And I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Hamada's comments regarding the school public safety plan. I also participated in Baxter's Bellflower High School and also Washington. And I was able to give input and I was very pleased that the administrators were able to address those concerns. I also want to thank the development, the Serona Development Group for taking care of the the concrete pour. Early morning sometime last month and it was no complaint. I I think the the noticing of the neighborhood. Really made a big difference because it started at one AM and by about two, two PM the next day, they were finished. So it was great. I think they did a good job in terms of notification and I think going forward, it's very critical that our residents are informed ahead of time. So that we can minimize any complaint that can possibly happen. So again, Public Works and Serona Development, thank you so much for a wonderful job on that concrete pour. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Santinas. Mr. Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gurecki, I've got a couple of questions for you. Could you help me out? How is our sale of our water company progressing? We thought possibly early part of this year, we might have some conclusion and. Do you feel any vibes from that organization that are the PUC?
Yeah, it's moving. The, as as always typical, things keep changing in the playing field up there, but there's a new administrative law judge assigned to the case. And he get himself from ARI. He did a request for information, which has been provided. The next step is to schedule for hearing. We think, we have no indication it's not going aside. It's just the wheels grinding exceedingly slow. I talked to Chris and he believes we're realistically looking at a March hearing date on that for the PUC. So I think it's going okay. It's just taking forever.
So none of, nothing's changed. The the terms of the agreement are still in place.
Everything's in place as we've discussed with it. So there's been no changes. There are no recommended for changes and even the Cal advocates are playing nice at the moment. So hopefully it continues on to go on that way.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Gurecki. Are you of the same mind? Or you have a different opinion?
Oh, no.
No, no.
I'm of the same mind. The PUC is extremely slow. A slow process.
But we're all confident it's going to be done by the second quarter of the year. How's that sound?
I think that's a fair bet, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet my life on it.
That gets us the Fourth of July guy, so. There you go. Thanks for your help.
Oh, that was.
Yep, that was it. So I'm going to request that we adjourn our meeting tonight in honor of the passing of Kenny Olson, well-known roofer in our town. Ken Olson was born Hudson, Iowa on April twelfth, nineteen twenty nine. He passed away December fifth, two thousand twenty one, at the age of ninety two. He moved to Bellflower with his brother at the age of fifteen, where he met his wife, Jerry Kotnick, at Excelsior High School. The two were married for seventy one years and had a wonderful and long marriage. Kenny was a hard worker. He always provided for his family. He became a roofing contractor and worked in the roofing industry for sixty seven years, establishing three different companies during that time. After Ken retired, he spent the majority of his time in his garage fixing antique cars. He also enjoyed attending many club meetings, including the Danish Brotherhood. The Model T Club, the Compton Hunting and Fishing Club, and of course, the Bellflower New Lions. Kenny was a man with many friends and not a single enemy. He loved to tell stories and jokes to everyone he met to brighten up their day just for a moment. He's a caring husband, a father, grandfather, great grandfather. He survived by three children, Mark Olson, Tony Olson-Gossit. And Michael Olson, eight grandchildren, sixteen great grandchildren. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out the entire Olson family. He was a great man, always had his, he knew his presence. And we're going to miss him, but I would like to request that we adjourn in his memory tonight. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Victor, Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just want to share, of course, happy new years to everyone. I'd like to share that. I received a presidential appointment from the president of the California Leagues Association to the. To represent us and our region in the Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee for the League of Cities. So just want to share that with you all and and that's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Okay, I too would like to wish everybody a happy new year as this being our first meeting of the year. We'll be taking care of a lot of business throughout the year and with that, we'll keep the city going the right direction with the right momentum. And with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting tonight in the memory of Kenny Olson to the next regular meeting. Of Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM, Monday, January twenty fourth, night, two thousand twenty two.